Call the meeting to order if we could, please. If you don't order, please. Thank you. Supervisor Fisher, you leave us an invocation, please, sir.
Let us bow our heads, please. Dear Lord and heavenly Father, we give thanks to you for this day and for our many blessings and for living here in Frederick County. We pray for all those who are suffering and recovering from natural disasters. We ask that you watch over all those in fire and rescue, first responders, our sheriff's department, and the men and women of our armed services. We ask for your guidance and direction in our work and decisions on behalf of the citizens of Frederick County. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Supervisor Lofton, would you leave us in the pledge, please, sir?
You stand with me and face the flag for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thompson of the agenda, Vice Chairman Fisher.
Mr. Chairman, I request that we add as item five under county officials, consideration of the request from Frederick County Public Schools for an FY-18 supplemental appropriation for the preschool expansion grant, and I so move that we adopt the agenda with that amendment.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Aye.
Two.
Three.
Thank you. Motion carries. Did you get them, Jay?
Please say.
Thank you, sir. All right, brings us to consent agenda. The tentative items or its consent are tabs D, E, and F. How would the board like to handle these?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
I still approve. In a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. D, E, and F are approved under consent. This is the portion of the meeting that the board sets aside for citizen comment on any item that is on the agenda but not subject to a public hearing, and I'm looking for those folks who want to speak to an issue other than the newly amended onto our agenda school concern. Are there any?
We had no one sign up, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, Board of Supervisors comments, are there any? Thank you. Minutes of the closed session and regular meeting of September 13th, 2017.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, the minutes are adopted. Vice Chairman Fisher, would you give me a hand at the end of the podium? Mr. Stroessner, would you join us, please, sir? Thanks for being with us. It's a resolution of appreciation for Harvey E. Ed Stroessner Jr., Frederick County. Whereas Eddie, Harvey E. Ed, I'll have a hard time with anything but Ed, Stroessner Jr. served Frederick County, Virginia for approximately 26 years in the Public Works Department. And whereas Eddie Stroessner Jr. began his career with Frederick County as Director of Engineering, Public Works, 1991 through 94, and Public Works Director from 93 to 2017. And whereas, under Harvey E. Ed Stroessner Jr.'s leadership, a number of projects were completed to include construction of a new animal shelter, renovations to the old Frederick County courthouse, design and construction of a new overflow parking area at Bowman Library, the Lake Holiday spillway, and Renaissance Drive, just to name a few. And whereas Harvey E. Ed Stroessner Jr. will be remembered for his leadership, project management and oversight, and his loyalty to and mentoring of the employees who worked for him. Now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks to Harvey E. Ed Stroessner Jr. for his dedication and dependability and wishes him all the best in future endeavors. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the accomplishments of this public servant. Adopted this 13th day of September, 2017. Thank you so much, sir.
Thanks. We'll see you tomorrow.
Okay. All right, this brings us to update of Economic Development Authority activities. Mr. Barker, sir, welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We're here to provide you an update on some activities that are being completed by the Economic Development Authority. For time's sake, I'm just going to provide an example of each one of our core areas, which is business attraction, business retention, and talent engagement. On the business attraction front, over the past few months, the EDA staff has been practically spreading the word of Frederick County, Virginia to its key targeted audiences that give us new business prospects. We shared Frederick County message, message to corporate real estate executives who focus on industrial portfolios at the Industrial Asset Management Council Fall Forum. We attended the Site Selector Guild's Fall Conference, which is composed of the world's foremost professional site consultants, and provided an update on economic happenings to Virginia Economic Development Partnership Business Project Managers. On the business retention front, on our website now, employers can gain access to real-time employment data on 30-day job postings. This is a report that was requested by employers to give a better understanding of the snapshot of positions that are being posted over a 30-year, 30-day period in areas of manufacturing, transportation, warehousing, professional services, and others. Items as far as total listings, certifications required, and occupations are a few of the data points that are made available. On talent engagements, which ends up being our largest project we work on these days with unemployment being where it is, the workforce initiative that's helped guiding that, that, that aspect continues to move forward. The steering committee has adopted an employment model based off of the model the Valley Health used called Pathway to Success, a community partnership. That, that steering committee initially went after to create a manufacturing model, but determined the best course of action was to do more of a all-accomplishing industry cluster focus using a rubic, which is a scoring worksheet. This rubic provides different levels of ways to score occupations, their needs, and that's cross-reference with specific needs that we find in each industry sector, as well as using other studies that have been completed recently from the Trimmer and Go Virginia studies as well. Also, too, you guys hopefully have on front of you, there's a career pathway infographic. This is a way that we've tried to package our, a complete aspect of what we do, trying to do address long-term workforce solutions for our area. We use this heavily, both with our business retention activities, but also it's one of our focal, focus points when we're out marketing the community as well. So, in closing, I hope you, you are comfortable the EDC is focused on keeping Frederick County's economy moving forward at a high level for the businesses and the citizens of this community. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are.
Any questions, Mr. Barker, anyone? We certainly appreciate the update and all you and your staff's hard work and recent successes. Outstanding. Well done.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, Economic Development Authority Business Incentive Policy, Mr. Barker.
What you have in front of you is a recommended guidelines pertaining to business incentives that was unanimously adopted by the Economic Development Authority's Board of Directors at their September 7th meeting. This document really is trying to provide formal structure and enhance transparency at how Frederick County conducts its business incentives activities. You'll see inside the guidelines, it's going to arrange of all aspects of the incentive process, to what businesses are eligible for incentives, how they become qualified, a committee that's formed to kind of completely oversee the process, as well as a sample performance agreement, which is using a model based off that there is getting Commonwealth Opportunity Funds for your review as far as a template. So, I'm happy to entertain any questions or clarify anything that's inside the document at this time.
Questions for Mr. Barker, anyone? Yes, Supervisor Schor.
Patrick, I had the opportunity to serve with you at Lord Fairfax on the various committees last, last, I guess it was last summer and spring, and one of the areas that we looked at was eligible businesses being biotechnology. Has that, has there been any thought to that?
When we looked at, when we did the targeted business study, we're looking at trying to find out where the 10-year forecasts are showing the most job growth. In, in that sector, there just wasn't a whole lot of jobs being forecasted for Virginia and looking at our assets that we had, that, that's why that didn't bubble up. Now, we revisited internally, so if employment projections changed and everything else seems to work, it could, it could come back in for sure.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Barker? Well, again, we certainly appreciate this. This was something we asked for earlier this year and appreciate the quick turnaround. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Will bring us to committee appointments. Planning Commission, Redbud.
Mr. Chairman, I submitted a application, but I think, I know that Jay did not have the opportunity to, to put it in. It was Kay Dawson, so if you all have seen it, that's fine. If you've not had the opportunity to review that, then we can do it for next, next time.
He did distribute them. Some of us saw them. Is every, everyone ready to move forward? Comfortable with that?
In that case, I would nominate Kay Dawson for the Planning Commission.
Second.
In a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, sir. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Opekin.
Mr. Chairman, I have a gentleman who is a meeting with and should have your application for the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. And Historic Resources Advisory Board, Redbud.
Same thing. I will have a person by the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Shaun E.
Mr. Chairman, I think what I'm going to do, since this term doesn't expire to the 22nd of May next year, I'm going to let my predecessor, successor take care of that. So, I'm going to just abstain from appointing anybody to this position.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Community Policy Management Team, we're still waiting for a recommendation from them. Economic Development Authority, I am working on. Hanley Regional Laboratory Board, think we have an application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. It's, was in your packet? How does the board feel about that one? Do you have a recommendation?
Some.
Supervisor Dunn.
I would still move.
So, we have a motion?
Second.
In a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. Mr. Gary A. Weigel is appointed to the Frederick County Planning Commission.
Hanley Laboratory.
I mean, Hanley Regional Laboratory. Now, we're at Member-at-Large, Representative for the Frederick County Planning Commission. I would ask the board to, to endorse and, and reappoint June Wilmont as the Member-at-Large.
So move. Second.
In a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we need a change of address on that.
Yes, I will get that. Anything else? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, Mrs. June Wilmont is reappointed. Thank you, and I think that brings us to the Shaun E. Land Sanitary District.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not ready to make any recommendations right yet.
Yes, sir. And then Northeast, Northwestern Services Community Services Board. I understand Ms. Rockwell is willing to be reappointed. How would the board like to handle this one?
I would move for her reappointment, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Deborah A. Rockwell is reappointed as Frederick County Representative, and I do believe that brings us to the end of the list. And, did I blast past?
Board of Equalization, I think.
I'm sorry?
Board of Equalization. I think we missed the Board of Equalization, although you have some time on that one.
I think that's why.
Yeah.
Have we contacted Ms. Brimbeck?
Patsy Brimbeck.
Have we?
I don't think so.
Okay, let's, let's contact her and see if she is interested in continuing to serve. Okay? All right, thank you. That will bring us to item number five on our agenda, which is, I'm sorry? Okay. Which is item we adopted, amended onto our agenda, rediscussion, renewed consideration of grant funding for Frederick County pre-K. A lot of folks here, we really appreciate you coming out, sharing your thoughts with us. I'll ask you to help us have an organized discussion and comment period. We don't have a sign-up sheet, so we'll ask you all to work together, come to the podium, share your name, magisterial district, and try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. Dress your comments to the board only. No discussion or, or debate, but if folks can't get it all in or have another thought they want to share, we can give folks a subsequent opportunity and will, but not until everyone who wishes to speak has gotten the opportunity to speak once. So, we'll open the public comment period and welcome you to work with each other and come to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Swager, and I am a resident of the Gainesboro District in Frederick County. I also happen to be the Director of Elementary Instructional Services for Frederick County Public Schools, and am a member of the Board of Directors for the Apple Country Head Start Program in our area. There are many adjectives I could use to describe what I felt two weeks ago upon hearing your vote to deny VPI Plus grant funding for the preschool program already underway in three classrooms in Frederick County schools. Shock, dismay, disappointment, frustration, these were just a few at the top of my list. However, what mostly ran through my mind was why? Why would you have voted to deny free funding to the school division for a program meant to support some of our neediest families in this community? Why would you have voted to deny funding for the continuation of this program run on grant funding that required no matching fund requests from our local government? Why would you later say you had questions that weren't answered when the school system has been providing answers about this grant since June? Why would you have voted to deny funding for Preschool Now when a mere three and a half months ago, you voted unanimously, I might add, to allocate the first installment of funding from the same exact grant? Why? Behind me right now are 54 reasons why you should have approved that funding two weeks ago in the same way you did in June. These are 54 of your constituents. These children have names, they have likes and dislikes, they have ideas and imaginations and enthusiasm. They love to learn, and they have families who love them dearly but who are not able to send them to private preschool providers. Thankfully for many families in our community, programs like the federal VPI Plus grant we received exist. Thankfully, there are people in this world who believe in the power of education, who support equity in education, who understand the value of research, and who realize the positive benefits such a program can have on a community. Unfortunately for families in our community, there are some who would deny our smallest citizens these same benefits and opportunities. That is shameful. The 54 children you see behind me and the 54 who could be served next year deserve better than such a short-sighted view of progress in Frederick County. Our entire community deserves better than this. I'm grateful that the Frederick County School Board, the elected governing body whose job it is to weigh in on and make decisions about programs and policies within our schools, believes in our children, their families, and their futures. I value and support their vision for our schools. Their positive leadership in this community should be applauded as they see the wisdom in capitalizing on grant opportunities such as this one to benefit students when we can. I could go on and on about this, but time is limited, and honestly, how much time should we really have to devote to indefensible actions as a board? You have an opportunity tonight to right this wrong. As a citizen, a parent, a constituent, and an educator, I respectfully implore you to reconsider your vote from two weeks ago denying these 54 children their right to an opportunity for an education. Do the right thing, approve this allocation, and if you choose to say no once again, let these be the 54 faces you see when you try to sleep at night.
Thank you.
My name is-
But please, folks, the, the applause takes comment time.
Okay, you can applaud when I'm done. It's okay. My name is Laura Davis. I am a resident of Gainesboro District. I am a lifelong member of Frederick County. I am one of the preschool teachers of Frederick County. My colleagues and I each hold a master's degree in education or early childhood education. Combined, we have over 45 years of experience. To be labeled a babysitter is not only offensive to our profession, but to us personally, sir. To approve in a seven-to-zero vote the startup funds for preschool program only to deny approving the remaining money allocated in a five-to-two vote is perplexing at best. In Psychology Today, Dr. Josh Gowan stated, "One of the most important findings about brain development shows that the brain has critical periods for learning. If you deprive a brain of information during this crucial time, it may never develop properly. The opportunity is lost. On the other hand, some early experiences can forever enhance the development of a young brain and potentially change behavior across an individual's lifespan. Now consider this: 85 to 90% of a child's brain is developed by the age of five." From a call for excellence in early childhood education, the National Association for the Education of Young Children, the nation's leading authority and voice for high-quality early childhood education states, "The NAEYC believes that our nation is at a crossroads. We must develop an integrated system of early childhood care and education that includes comprehensive approaches that directly involve families and communities in program design, implementation, and evaluation. We can invest now in our children and families and enjoy long-term savings with a more vibrant nation of healthy, achieving children and more stable families. Or, we can fail to make the investment and pay the price: increased delinquency, greater educational failures, lowered productivity, less economic competitiveness, and fewer adults prepared to be effective, loving parents to the next generation of children. Federal, state, and local government, communities, parents, and the private sector must share in the responsibility of ensuring the well-being of children and families. Our families are worthy of a quality education for their children, the children in our community and in our classrooms. On behalf of my colleagues and myself, I urge the board to reconsider approving funds to continue our preschool program."
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Cooley. I'm the principal of Indian Hollow Elementary School and a 29-year resident of Frederick County in the Opekin District. I am here tonight to implore you to reconsider your decision on the VPI Plus grant and accept the preschool grant money that has been allotted at no cost to the county. Students who enter kindergarten today without any preschool experience often struggle to keep up with their peers. Students who begin academically behind remain behind throughout years of schooling. We spend many resource dollars in remediation and intervention to help those students catch up. Let me share some facts about Indian Hollow. We have no licensed preschools or daycare facilities and no public libraries or county parks within our school zone. 42% of our students are on free or reduced lunch. In 2015-16, 59% of our kindergarten students had no preschool experience. Last year, the figure was 47%, and this year, 49% of the students entered school with no preschool preparation. Many of these students knew no letters or numbers, could not count, didn't know how to hold a pencil or cut with scissors, didn't understand how to take turns, follow directions, or get along with other students in large group situations. While at one time, this may have been expected, state standards for kindergarten are different than in the past. By this time in the year, 10 weeks in, kindergarten students today are expected to have learned upper and lowercase letters and sounds, to be able to write their names, and have knowledge of beginning reading skills. They also are expected to read, write, and represent numbers to 20 and compare sets of items. This is an almost insurmountable learning curve without already having some knowledge of letters, writing, basic numbers, and school readiness skills, all of which can come from preschool. Current educational research supports the benefits of preschool, especially for students who are economically disadvantaged. We currently have 11 students in the preschool program at Gainesboro Elementary School. We see seven of those students every day as they transfer buses to and from the program. It's a joy to see them grow and develop as they share with their learning with us. One of those students yesterday afternoon shared a poster of Jack and Lannerns she had cut out, colored, and glued. She proudly counted six pictures, added her stuffed teddy bear, and said, "Six Jack and Lannerns, and one bear make one, two, three, four, five, six, seven." Before preschool, she didn't know this. Please do not cut off this vital resource that helps level the playing field and gives our most vulnerable children the start that they need in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Serena Ums, and I'm a resident of Stonewall, Stonewall District, a mom of two children, one of who is four, and I'm a librarian at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School. I'm here to encourage you to reconsider your vote about not supporting the preschool program in our county. I've been a resident of Frederick County since I was five years old. I attended this public school system, and I'm extremely proud of that. After graduating from Millbrook, I went to James Madison University. I couldn't afford the school on my own. My parents both worked full-time jobs, sometimes working an additional part-time job just to make ends meet. They had three daughters who are active in school and our community. When going to college became a reality for me, I panicked. My parents couldn't afford to send me there on their own, so I was fortunate enough to win the Gerald F. Smith Scholarship from Belly Proteins here in town. I was awarded $40,000 to attend college. Without the support of my parents and that $40,000, I'm not sure I'd be standing here in front of you today. I was given the love and encouragement from my home, but I needed additional resources to support my academic dreams and here my future career. That's why I'm asking, this is exactly what I'm asking to do for the 18 faces I see every week and the other students who are benefiting greatly from this program. As I started earlier, I have a four-year-old, and I know what it's like to pay for childcare and preschool, and fortunately, my husband and I have jobs that allow us to send our daughter to a preschool of our own choosing. But there are other families who are not able to do that even though they want to. My daughter has been in an accredited preschool program for the last two months. In the past two months, I've seen a vast improvement in her letter recognition, problem-solving skills, and social development. This is what preschool does. It helps them become more acclimated to an academic environment so they are ready to sit on the rug when their kindergarten teacher asks them to, so they are ready to walk down the hallway behind their fellow classmates, so they can properly hold a pair of scissors when they are asked to perform a task. Preschool is not play for these children. It is rigorous and it is intense, and this is what my 18 kids are getting every day at Apple Pie Ridge. Without it, many of these students could have significant delays when entering kindergarten next year. Several would be deemed behavior problems because of their lack of experience in a structured educational environment. 10 weeks ago, when school started, many could not sit quietly and listen to a story or follow two-step directions, simply, first, sit at your table, and second, grab a crayon from the basket. In the past 10 weeks, I have seen these squirrely, excitable children make great strides in terms of how they handle school materials, how they follow directions, and how they interact with each other. And I just, again, encourage you to change your mind, because these kids are already doing great things, and you have the power to make good things happen for them.
Thank you.
Good night to the chairman, members of the board. My name is Tanisha Francis Hutchinson, and my daughter is Tanika Hutchinson. I'm from the Redbud District. She attends the Sensory Road preschool. When I got the news that the program, the funding for the program was going to be discontinued, I was so disturbed, because I'm from a culture wherein children are allowed to start school from age three, and if they're, if they're able to manage it, they can start from two. All my kids started school at age two. My daughter is going to be five in- My daughter is going to be five in January, and I've done the research. I'm also in education, but because of migrating from another country, I have to be taking courses so that I can be licensed to be a teacher here. So right now, I'm just a teaching assistant. My husband is working, and because of the demands, we cannot find the time to assist our children the way that they should. Luckily for me, my other three children had that foundation. Last night, I got home after nine after leaving class at Lord Fairfax Community College. I don't know what she is doing before I get home. So I was so comfortable to have a program wherein I know that when I send her off, she will be learning something. She was attending a program before, and she cried daily. She did not want to go, because there was no interest there for her. Since starting the preschool program, she is so excited. Because of the culture here, if you're not, if you were not born before or after September thirty, you're not allowed to go to school. She is just in pre-K, and she's going to be five in January. So to me, she is going to be too old already for going into kindergarten. So all of what she's learning now is very important. It was stated that it is a daycare. In a daycare, kids just go there and play. She's able to learn her letters, she's able to write. I've noticed a vast improvement in what she's doing. Her language has expanded. How she communicates with me, her other siblings, her teacher, I went there and she was so excited to share all that she is learning. Her socialization, I even noticed that some of the problems that they're facing on the buses, if the kids were exposed to this kind of environment from an early age, she was so excited to come home and share with me how she is supposed to even behave on the bus. So it is not just in the classroom, but when we tie everything together, behaving on the bus, how they socialize with others, not waiting until they get to five, you are telling them they need to behave in a particular way. They would have already been socialized as to how to behave, so that when they get to kindergarten, they're ready to learn. Thank you. I really hope that you'll reconsider your decision.
Thank you.
My name is Logan Shepherd. I'm a resident of the Gainesboro District. I'd like to address the Board on the issue of the funding for the VPI Plus Grant. I'd first like to thank Chairman De Haven and Supervisor Wells for voting in favor of the initiative. I'm a proud product of Frederick County Public Schools, and I'm the father of two children who are enrolled in Frederick County Public Schools. To say that I'm disappointed by the decision of the majority of the Board to reject the funding is an understatement. One of the reasons given by this Board is that it's inappropriate for four-year-olds. This statement demonstrates an extreme overreach of the authority given to you by your electorate. You've not been elected to your position to make decisions or opine about what is or is not instructionally appropriate. You've been elected to make decisions in the best interests of county taxpayers. It's important to note along these lines that this requires the use of zero local tax dollars. How is a program that supports literacy, personal and social development, health and physical development, and many others not appropriate for a child of any age? Another comment made was that there are numerous private preschools people can send their children to. This statement shows either an unwillingness or an inability to understand what the program is designed for. People whose financial situation does not allow them to afford preschool for their child, but who are looking for every possible avenue to give their child an increased chance of success in school and beyond. One recent study of over fifteen hundred low-income preschool students showed that children who participated in a public preschool intervention program had significantly higher rates of both high school graduation and more overall years of completed education. The study also showed that these students had significantly lower rates of juvenile arrests, violent arrests, and school dropout. Rates of grade retention and special education services were also greatly reduced. The concluding statement of the study says this, "Participation in established early childhood intervention program for low-income children was associated with better educational and social outcomes for up to twenty years. These findings are among the strongest evidence that established programs administered through public schools can promote children's long-term success." Numerous other studies have been conducted on the subject. According to the May 2013 publication of Educational Leadership Magazine, a few of these are the Perry Study, the Abesodarian Study, and the Chicago Study, which have all followed children well beyond high school and into adulthood. These studies found that of the children who attended high-quality preschool programs, the incidence of high school graduation and college attendance and graduation were significantly higher, particularly for low-income and at-risk students. In addition to this, these same students were less likely to enter the juvenile or adult correctional system and were less likely to become teen parents. These are not studies done by casual observers. These are peer-reviewed, published studies that represent authentic, reliable data points relative to the issue of preschool for at-risk students. I can assure you that these are just a few of the countless studies done that show similar results. Your vote against this program, which costs the county nothing, is a vote to deny these opportunities to at-risk children in our county. The gap in school readiness is one that rarely gets talked about and tends to take a backseat to achievement gaps seen in standardized test scores, but school readiness is as important an issue as any in education. I implore you to revisit this issue and change your stance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, or evening, I believe. My name is James Coats. I'm a resident of the Gainesboro District of Frederick County. I'm the legal redress officer for the Winchester Chapter of the NAACP. They asked me to read this brief statement on their behalf. "The Winchester Chapter of the NAACP strongly support the preschool pilot program for four-year-olds in Frederick County. It is requested that your Board obtain grant funds and do all it can to support this important initiative. Submitted respectfully, Gwen Borders Walker, President, and M. Tyson Gilpin, Chairman and Education Committee Chair. And on a personal note, someone who's been in education for forty-four years, I guarantee you that you are, again, developing future residents of Frederick County for leadership positions. You can develop them now and make them productive citizens, or you can, again, deny this grant again and slow the development not only of these children, but of the county in general. Thank you."
My name is Kathy Oldham, and I reside in Stonewall District. I'm here this evening to share with you my thoughts about the Virginia Preschool Initiative. As a county resident and teacher, I was delighted to find out that our county would be holding a preschool for at-risk four-year-olds this year. Like many others who live or work here, I recognize the correlation between a good start and success in later life. You can imagine my shock and disbelief when I learned that the majority of this Board did not share this basic tenet of a successful society: take care of your young. Humans have a basic instinct to protect their young. It's how our species has survived. If your ancestors did not do their best to take care of their young, where would you be today? Why wouldn't anyone not want to do their best for our young Winchester citizens? So I looked on the Internet and learned that this program is associated with lower costs for special education remediation, less juvenile crime, less dependence on public assistance programs, and higher employment rates overall. So then I read the articles in Winchester Star from the few people who did not support this initiative. They seemed to worry mostly about where the money will come in the future. I do not worry about that. But do I like paying taxes? No. Do I like wearing a seatbelt or taking my car in for repairs? No. But these things are important? Yes. Do I want to give our youngest Winchester citizens an opportunity for a better future? Yes, because their future will affect my future. These kids will be running for our government. They will be our police and our doctors, and I want them to be the best they can be. I am an elementary music teacher in the county, and let me tell you, there is a big difference between a student who's ready for kindergarten and one who is not. I've had both in my twenty years of teaching. I've known kids from kindergarten through fifth grade and beyond. The kids who come to school understanding how to play nicely with others, how to follow directions, and how to enjoy learning do so much better down the road. Those who do not come to kindergarten with these skills are constantly struggling to figure out how to behave in social situations. They get in trouble more frequently, and they immediately fall behind their peers academically and socially. Teachers have to spend lots of time trying to catch these students up, and then the other kids miss instructional time. A preschool program for kids who need it is a win-win situation. So please don't worry about the money. None is needed at this point. And don't listen to people who claim they did not have preschool and they turned out just fine. Times have changed drastically. If we didn't change with the times, we wouldn't have cell phones, Internet, Starbucks, or air-conditioned homes. Things do not always have to be the way they were. I did not grow up in Winchester. In my city, they spent money on education and supported educational products, projects all the time. I didn't know of anyone who had to go to a board meeting to ask for support for education. It was always supported. Now that county is very wealthy, and its citizens are too. If you're worried at all about money, invest in the education of our young people. Please, take a trip outside Winchester. Visit other counties. Successful schools draw good citizens to their county, who then bring money into the county. Please reconsider your vote and support the preschool initiative.
It's been a very, very long time since I've been moved to come to a governing body. I'm Anita Jenkins. I live at 1749 Honey Ridge Road. My husband Nathan and I have owned land in Frederick County since 1969 and have been permanent residents there since 2003. I am very moved by this discussion tonight. In my opinion, the Board of Supervisors erred in its decision regarding the Virginia Preschool Initiative Plus Grant. I am concerned by the rejection of the preschool grant on several levels. First of all, I was not in the area when I heard the news, but I immediately assumed and then learned that there existed some major communication issues with the Board of Supervisors to the Frederick County School Board. The word "appropriate" has been used a lot, so I'm going to ask, is that appropriate? The timeline for all meetings and discussions on this subject reflect a far different expected outcome than what occurred at the last Board of Supervisors meeting. Again, governing bodies should not blindside one another. A member of the Board stated that the school board failed to answer all questions about the grant. Surely, months, you've known about the grant, research could have been done. It's very transparent with the facts and the details. I am also embarrassed, being someone who attended Frederick County schools and who now lives in the county and who has loved this community in many, many different ways, to hear some of the comments that were made about our families. It seems at times that some of those comments, in my opinion, were elitist, and this saddens me for the citizens of Frederick County. There have been many arguments for the reinstatement of the preschool grant. I support this reinstatement because of the large volume of evidence-based research and the strong experience of parents and educators, which clearly demonstrates the impact of early childhood education on all students. I do believe I saw a comment that said the research was not out there. I'd be more than glad to sit with anybody, and we can go through that research. There exists a somewhat overused adage, but it's very applicable to this advocacy. A rising tide lifts all boats. Do this for all of the children of Frederick County. They will all benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen, and I'm a regular mother from pre-K. And I'm concerned about your decision, because for me and my son, it's a very important thing to go and learn to the school. Since he started the school, he's learning a lot. And the more important thing is, when he goes to the school, he starts learning English. He doesn't speak English at all at home. He speaks Spanish. And when he comes from the school, he's like another person talking about the school, talking about the numbers, the letters. He's talking in English all the time with me, and you know, it's hard, because he's speaking two different languages: Spanish and English. And we were not concerned about the English, because we were sure when he started school, he will learn everything there, and it's true. He's learning everything, and he's such a young child, but he's learning a lot, because he's in the age where he's like a little sponge. He saw everything, everything from the school, everything from the people around him, everything from his mother and his father. Then, when I received the notice, there probably is going to be a council program. I got so sad, because the thought is, what happened if the more important thing and the worry is, the people learn and go to school? What's going on now after I got a good, wonderful news that they're going to have the pre-K in the school? Now they're saying, no, they could go, because they have more important things to do with the money. One more important thing is, put the money in the children's, where they're going to be the future of this country. They're going to be the more important things. They're doing, I don't know, a lawyer, a doctor, I don't know. You don't know what they're going to do in the future, but the proof is, they're going to start with a good team, learning from the youngest, from the things like the numbers. He got home and said, Mom, start counting from the one to twenty. He didn't do before. He did just until nine or ten, probably. And then he started counting to twenty. Then the other day, he started counting until thirty and said, wow, what's going on? You're learning a lot in the school. And every day, he's so excited, sharing with me what he's learning. He talks about the teacher, and I asked him, would you like to stop going to the school? And what he said, no, Mom, I'd love to go to the school, because I'm learning a lot. That's the word that he says, my son. And he's here, and there is the proof that he's learning. If you would like to see it, it's the proof. It's not rushed, it's a proof.
Thank you. I don't know why I chose to follow that, so I should have gone first.
My name's Nadine Potega. I'm the president and CEO of United Way of Northern Shenandoah Valley. We cover the city of Winchester, Frederick, Shenandoah, Clark, and Page County. The purpose of my comments this evening will be to share the findings of a recent study that United Ways in Virginia released in July of this year called the Alice Report. The Alice Report is a data report that studies financial hardship in Virginia. ALICE stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. ALICE households earn more than the official U.S. poverty level, but less than the basic cost of living. In other words, households who are working in needed jobs that don't pay enough to afford the basic necessities, including housing, food, childcare, healthcare, and transportation. ALICE often doesn't qualify for governmental assistance or social service programs, so they are virtually invisible to the system, their struggle unseen and unknown. The findings of this study are important as you evaluate whether or not to approve the funds for the Virginia Preschool Grant. Much of the population this grant will serve is within this ALICE population. I could share with you the many ways that pre-K education benefits students, but that seems to be covered here tonight. What I'm here to provide is a look at how these grant funds could impact families and businesses in Frederick County beyond just the education benefits it provides. Families with children are the second-largest household type in Frederick County, but make up the largest group struggling financially. The state average of families with children that have income below the ALICE threshold is twenty-seven percent. In Frederick County, it's forty percent. Not surprisingly, the most expensive household budget is for a household with young children, due to not only these households' larger size, but also because of childcare, preschool, and after-school care. Childcare for two children accounts for twenty-four percent of the family's budget, their greatest expense. And the cost of childcare in Virginia increased by six percent from 2007 to 2008. And the cost of childcare in Virginia increased by 6% from 2007 to 2015. These increases have made childcare costs prohibitive to many ALICE families. A recent study found that it was 24% harder for families to afford childcare in 2012 than in 2004, and 33% harder for single parents. While there are options for sliding-scale daycare and pre-K options in Frederick County and city of Winchester, most programs are at capacity or have a long waiting list. The demand for sliding-scale services far outpaces the availability. The reality is that ALICE families have to make hard decisions when it comes to childcare. Some are forced, some are faced with high costs of childcare or lack of access. In Virginia, on average, between 2011, 2015, 65% of children ages three to four who had income below the 200% federal poverty level were not enrolled in school, in nursery school, or in preschool, compared to 45% for those earning more than 200%. I hope and I urge that you reconsider your vote for the economic stability and vitality of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gus Morrison. I am a resident of the Shawnee District. Some of you may have seen my commentary to the star today. If not, I would like to leave it to share it with you. It's called, "Please Do Not Deny These Children The Precious And Invaluable Opportunity." I have no kids in school in Frederick County. I have no grandkids in Frederick County, but I've had a long passion for supporting the need for an education. I know in your last vote, there was some concern, three major concerns. One was about the age of the kids. Well, I'm absolutely baffled by that because we have all heard that old notion, that learning begins in the cradle. So, being too young to learn is really a puzzle, see? And it goes back to the 16th century England when they had preschools. So, it's something that any and every parent that can afford it, one of their most valued priorities is putting their kid in a quality preschool. All of you familiar with Powonton? They have a preschool, but the other concern was about, these parents can pay, can put their kids in a private school. But as you all know, probably know, Powonton, one of our most reputable schools, they have preschool that starts at roughly $9,000. Now, how many of our low-income families can afford that kind of preschool? But it had been long established, going way back, that early learning had very valuable lifelong results. We often hear about the behavior problems of our youth. Discipline is one of the most, one of the most serious problems we have in high school, yet preschools have been known to dramatically reduce behavior problems in youth. It teaches them how to control their emotions. It teaches them how to get along with other kids. So that's a very, very invaluable aspect of preschools. The third point about it was the extent to which it may cost the county, cost our local taxpayers. Well, when we get to that point, two years down the road, after these $502,499 are gone, then you can reconsider that. At this point, it's no cost to our taxpayers, and how can we pass up such an opportunity? I certainly hope you will reconsider your vote and vote in favor of expanding this opportunity to our youth. As you all know, Head Start has been around for a long, long time, and it has been an invaluable tool for so many of our low-income kids. So, 30 governors are considering expanding their preschool program. 30 governors across America is considering expanding their statewide preschool programs. We have the opportunity here with no cost to our local taxpayers. Please, let's not pass up that opportunity. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and to the members of the Board. My name's Brandy Hammond from the Shawnee District. As a member of this community, I was really shocked when I heard that the Board had voted against the continued grant funding for the preschool initiative. After the shock wore off, I was really confused. I didn't understand why this Board would approve the initial grant funding, but then later deny the continued funding so that this preschool program that we've already started could continue. Mr. Fisher, while I was disappointed with the way you voted last time, I was so happy with how quickly you responded to my email, and I feel like that response indicated that you wanted to gather more information, and we're keeping an open mind to look into this. And imagine my thrill this evening when you brought up the preschool initiative to be added to the agenda tonight, and I greatly, greatly thank you for that. So, thank you. And I want to thank all the Board members this evening for listening to us all here tonight. Please, please, please fix this tonight by voting a unanimous yes to continue the grant funding for this great preschool opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Richards, and I live in the Stonewall District. I've been blessed to be a teacher in Frederick County Public Schools for 25 years, and I wanted to share something that I found as I was digging through my past personal school records. My mom and dad were both teachers and, of course, kept everything pertaining to my sister and my school records, and it's a report card of mine. So if you please humor me for a few moments as I take a trip down memory lane, I would like to share some of my skills that I was graded upon. So, in social studies, map and globe skills. In phonics, uses skills, uses sounds in isolation, beginning sounds, middle sounds, ending sounds, and blending sounds. This has a point. In language arts, uses capitals, punctuation, comprehension, and oral reading. In mathematics, recalls addition and subtraction facts and solves story problems. What I found remarkable was that those exact same skills are skills that I am teaching this quarter in my kindergarten classroom. For example, just today, I taught a lesson in math regarding addition. It's K.6 that states, "The student will model and solve single-step story and picture problems with sums to 10." In reading, we worked on diagram blends of SH, which is language arts K.7. These are just two examples of how my old-school skills have overlapped into what I'm teaching today. But what I neglected to tell you was what year that report card was for. That report card that I read to you of mine from all those years ago, the one that matches what I'm teaching now in kindergarten, that was my second-grade report card, right here. So what does that tell you? The report card that was taught in second grade 30-some-odd years ago, the state of Virginia deems appropriate to teach in five- and six-year-olds in kindergarten. Is that right? Is that developmental? Well, what I know is that I and the teachers that I work with every day do our level best to make it fun and easy for our little ones to learn these skills day in and day out. This is why you can guess I'm a proponent for the preschool program. When a child comes into my classroom that has not been prepared for school, I can tell you from being on the front line, it is not easy for them to catch up. We are on our 47th day of school and working on diagram blends of S-H, T-H, and C-H. Now imagine you can't recognize your name, or spell it, or know your ABCs, or count to 10, and by the way, counting to 100 was in our last quarter for Virginia. It's an overwhelming day and can become very frustrating. We as kindergarten teachers are tasked with being the first person they encounter on their 13-road journey in the public school system. It's a job I respect and take very seriously. I want these little ones to leave loving school in June and wanting more. All students should be given every advantage to be successful in kindergarten. We are sending them on a 13-year trip. Why would we send some of them with an unpacked suitcase when a full trunk is available right now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Shontae Washington. I'm with the Red Bud District. After learning about the VPI Plus program, I'm at a loss as to why some of our Board of Supervisors felt obligated to vote against a program that does not use local tax dollars, but does allow for our community youths to get an opportunity to enhance their start to their education, especially for those youths who otherwise would not be able to do so. As a volunteer working with many of these children, including helping that class count to 100, I have seen the gap for those students who come in and do not have a solid foundation. Being a volunteer that helps directly, I would also encourage you all to take that time to volunteer inside of a classroom to see what happens. I ask the Board in the future to make decisions not based off personal decisions, but after an extensive research, which involves including the community opinion. I encourage you all to take the opportunity tonight to right this wrong, especially since you now have more information to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Supervisors, my name is, my name is...
Pick your microphone up, please. There you go. Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Supervisors, my name is David Dixon from Stonewall District. I understand where you're coming from, watching the budget, everybody's pulling on your pockets, and there is a lot of need out there, not only within the school system, everywhere in the county. Everybody needs stuff. But I'm here because my granddaughter is going to this program, and without this program, she would be struggling to go in to get be ready for kindergarten. My wife and myself both work. When my wife's not working, she's with our granddaughter, working with her, but they need more than just, you know, love and care. They need education. What I've heard about this program has been educating her and getting her ready and being more and more ready for being in kindergarten. What I'm challenging you to do is, the funding's there. It's not costing the county anything right now. Go with the funding, what we have, get somebody to go through and see how the program works, and then before it's canceled, have a vote within the county that we've had votes before on different matters. When elections come up, vote on it, let the people decide if they want to have it. You'll find out that most people want to take care of the children. Without the children, we would not have this county here. That's what my challenge is. Let it go through, have a vote, and let the people decide, not the Board of Supervisors. Then your hands are up, you're not tied up to it, the people will make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Louise Dixon. I'm his wife, and I'm from the Stonewall District. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for all you do for our county. Like you said, my granddaughter attends the Frederick County Public School preschool program, and she's very excited about it every day, and she's made tremendous improvement in her cognitive skills, social skills, communication skills. I could talk for a long time about what she talks about, but they learned so much. They learned different techniques to help them understand and express their emotions, which really helps them in school. It'll help her later. An example is, they talk about filling people's buckets with kind words, and she tells me that she's trying to fill everyone's buckets with kind words and being nice to everyone. So she really enjoys her music, art, and her PE classes. I like it that it's in the school, the public schools, because they get used to routines and they get used to what it's like in the school. She's learning how to write her name, and her teachers and the director are caring. They're wonderful. They really are very skilled at assisting students with their individual needs, and they really try to help families with what they might need in all different ways. And they, like with the video they have on the Frederick County website, they talk about their routines. They are purposeful and play and play. They also do all kinds of activities that will help them later in school. And I really believe in early intervention, and she just enjoys going so much, and she's come a long way, and it's not even November yet, so she's going to be very ready for kindergarten, and I'm very thankful for all that everyone's done in the program that works in it. And I really believe, like others have said, I've read about it too, that it really helps people stay in school, students stay in school, helps with their behavior, helps with their later achievements and goals, they're so much more ready for kindergarten in first grade. And thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Joy Kirk. I am a resident of the Back Creek District, and I am president of the Frederick County Education Association. I was saddened by the decision of this Board to not accept the federal VPI Plus grant to fund the preschool program. As a middle school educator, I have experienced teaching students with and without strong educational foundations. Yes, as a middle school teacher, it is often obvious which of our students are coming to us without a strong foundation. Yes, as high school teachers, they can often identify the students who are coming to them without a strong educational foundation. It is not the students' fault. It is not the parents' fault. No one asks to come in to a socio-economically disadvantaged family. No one asks to lose their jobs. These things happen. They are part of our society. This preschool program is designed to give children a leg up who otherwise would not have it. This program provides strong foundational learning skills, if you have heard this evening. I'm not going to name the studies that have been named countless times tonight, but I'm going to name one you've not heard of. I know one thing this county likes to talk about is money and funding. There is a study called "The Early Childhood Economic Development With a High Public Return." This study was done by a Federal Reserve Bank official who found preschool's return on investment at 12% after inflation. A 12% return on a half a million dollars that's costing us nothing. It's a win for the county. It's a win for our children. I don't see how we can afford to say no. We do not live in a utopian society where everyone has equal opportunities from birth. This program is designed to provide our youngest with engaging learning opportunities they otherwise would not have. I thank you on behalf of the current and future teachers and staff who will encourage, educate, and foster the love of learning in not only these 54 children, but we hope others to come. Please reconsider your vote and support our youngest learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rochelle Newlin. I'm from the Back Creek District. I was not planning on speaking tonight. I'm not a Frederick County employee. I'm not a teacher in the school system. I do have a master's degree in early childhood, however. Everyone here has already told you about the studies. You guys are flooded with that, but I'd like to tell you a story about me. I'm 50 years old, born and bred here in Winchester, out on Stewart Street when the hospital used to be there. In 1971, I started Robinson Elementary School. You guys probably remember that if you're from here. They had a pseudo Head Start preschool program. They had a pseudo Head Start preschool program that I had the luxury of going to. My parents could not afford preschool. I got into the program. Everything was going well and actually skipped kindergarten. Don't know how that happened, but they promoted me to first grade. Graduated from James Wood in '85. Graduated from Shepherd in '91 cum laude. Now I have my master's degree. Did early childhood preschool program cause that? I don't know. I'm first generation from being at the poverty level. My son graduated from Charando last year. So what I'm just saying is, as a taxpayer, I see the benefit. As a non-employee of the county, I see the benefit of early childhood. I also teach in early childhood and this is what we say to my four-year-old. Oops, we made a mistake, but we can fix it. So please, oops, admit you made a mistake and let's fix this. Thank you.
Dr. Lamont.
Chairman DeHaven, Board members, thanks for the time. I'm speaking on behalf of the Frederick County School Board. Just a couple of points for clarification. On behalf of the School Board, we do know that the Board of Supervisors, this Board, is not inclined to financially support, at this point in time, new initiatives or programs. We understand that and we accept that and that is fine. And it was never our intent, when this grant came through, that that would be an obligation of the Board of Supervisors. In fact, you probably don't know this because it never came before you, but for the last eight-plus years, we have received the opportunity for the Virginia Pre-K Grant that required a match grant from the county. We looked at that situation. We realized the situation the county was in. We realized the relationship that we have. We understand that relationship, what your priorities are, and we never put that grant forward and never asked for that. We realized the situation and we realized your position. That's why it was really hard for our Board to understand why no to this grant. As we know and as you've heard, this is no county funds at all. And it is not the intent of the School Board to ask for funds from the county when this grant is over. We have told our administrators and our staff, when they were hired for this grant, that this is a two-year commitment. That's all we have. We don't know what's going to happen in two years. And I think it's important for you to know that and understand that in our relationship. The other thing I think that is important to know is really a process and a principle that I think I need to say on behalf of our Board. You do know, and I know you know, that by the Constitution of Virginia, by code, it is our responsibility to decide on the priority of education and the services offered in our buildings. That is our prerogative. It is not the prerogative of the Board of Supervisors. It is a prerogative of the Board of Supervisors to fund our services. That is your yes or no. What goes on in those buildings rests with the School Board. I know our relationship is strong. I know it will continue and I look forward to that.
Thank you, sir.[816.57][816.57][applause] Anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone at all?
Good evening. My name is Lauren Porter. I am one of the VPI teachers. I have the Children for Red Bud run and we are NREP. I was not planning on speaking at all. I have a lot I want to say that I won't, but I do really appreciate all the points everyone's made. I agree, ditto on all of that. What I would like to say to you is if you have questions about what's going in our classroom, come in. You are all invited to come into our classrooms. Come visit us. Come see what our kids are doing. And I guarantee you, you won't be able to tell me it's not worth it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.[872.69][872.69][applause] Anyone else like to speak? Anyone? I'm going to close the public comment portion. We certainly thank you for your participation and your thoughts and your concerns and sharing is very helpful to the process. We thank you again for taking time away from your busy schedules to be with us this evening and share. Mr. Chairman Fisher.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board appropriate the amount of $502,498.66 as an FY18 supplemental appropriation representing the preschool expansion grant received by the Frederick County Public Schools.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Discussion. Mr. Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I appreciate everyone coming out this evening to share their views on this subject. And I ask myself, why are we here? Why are we here? I am shocked and dismayed that we are here. I approved a request by the schools in May to accept a grant for a pilot program of two classrooms, Pre-K, to be fully funded for the FY17-18 school year. So why are we here tonight? They say time flies when you're having fun, so I must have had tons of fun, but I don't remember it because obviously this is the end of the school year. I don't understand that. The reason that I voted yes on the initial grant was, again, it's going to be fully funded for one year. That would give me time for research, thought, and decision-making before having to decide on making a program a permanent part of the school budget. And trust me, it will be a permanent part of the school budget. The School Board and the school administration has deliberately and blatantly squandered the opportunity to have that opportunity for discovery, discussion, and debate on such questions as, where are we going to find the rooms for all these additional classes that you're going to hold? We just learned that by accepting the recommended guidelines by the Department of Education for the state, we don't have 600 seats in our schools that we used to have. We just learned that in July. We have been hearing for some months now about how overcrowded the schools are. So the schools has not provided me any information on where are we going to find these extra Once you have the rooms, now Governor McCovey, as I understand it, held a forum yesterday because he was going to discuss the teacher shortage in Virginia. Where are we going to find the teachers? Are we assured they're going to have enough teachers to be there to teach these young children what they need to know? Don't know. Is it going to be universal Pre-K? Senator Tim Kaine would love that, I guarantee you, because that was, he was preaching. Right now, it's 200% at a poverty level. What will it be when Frederick County decides that it's going to go full-time at all schools? What will it be? What will be the ongoing cost to the county? The cost, to say, why are we here? The cost of this initial program, as it appears, has far exceeded what we were told. Indication of poor money management? I think so. Is there an opportunity to partner with private organizations that already are providing this service? Don't know. We are here tonight because the School Board unilaterally violated the trust placed in them to provide this program as stated in the original request and I will not support
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
My question concerning funding for this program has been responded to by the school system. Dr. Lamont and I met, talked about it. I guess we've been meeting for over 13 years. Even though we don't disagree on lots of things, you know, we still sit down and talk to each other in a respectful way and I greatly appreciate that. My issue's always been about the county taxpayer, that it'll be required to fund this program if federal and state departments no longer provide the funding. Kind of what we get, the School Board gets it, this Board gets it. We get these unfunded mandates of how many of this and that you need to have and we'll give you a little bit or nothing, but you got to do it. And this sort of hit me that this was part of what was going on and I just needed some answers to the questions. And as with any program, there's pros and cons and until you get in and try them, who knows? And I do depend on the School Board and the administration to decide the educational programs that are best for our children. Again, I'm glad Dr. Lamont pointed out that this evening. What we're going to be faced with down the road, however, is the county will have many challenges to its budget in the coming years with fire and rescue, the Sheriff's Department, the school system, and the list goes on and on. So my intent was to provide for the record that subsequent Boards of Supervisors won't be required to provide local funding for this program if federal and state funding ceases. That was my sole intent and I am going to support the motion, Mr. Chairman.[1262.15][1262.15][applause]
Anyone else care to comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Slaughter.
I've heard concerns this evening about why this Board made the decision that we did last week and, as I pointed out in several emails that I've sent to you, it was regarding questions that we were not able to obtain answers to at our last meeting. Typically, we have representatives from all departments here that are present to answer any questions. And unfortunately, we did not have that at our last meeting. But what I would like to read to you is the memo that accompanied our Board packet when we initially voted on the initial grant. "The fiscal year 2017 budget adjustment to the school operating fund is requested for $280,825.34, which represents federal grant funds awarded in FY2017 and are to be used to fund two preschool classrooms for fiscal year 2017-2018 school year. No local funds required." Our Board, at that time, on May 25th unanimously approved funding for what we were told was to fund two preschool classrooms for the full fiscal 27, or full school year 2017-18. What I have since learned in reading publications in the newspaper is that those funds have now been used to increase capacity and use for initial startup cost. So I have contacted Stonewall School Board representative and have been told that, yes, those funds were used for that. What my question was is that if our original appropriation was for $280,000 to fund the two classrooms and we move forward to fund an additional classroom, classroom number three, why was the funding or the capacity increase in adding an extra third classroom, how did that happen without an appropriation? And that's what we were asked to vote on at our last meeting, is an additional appropriation of money. So what concerns me is that we originally voted for two classrooms for full funding for a full year and now we are learning that the funding that we approved on May 25th has now been used to add a third classroom and for startup cost. So I'm a little confused as to how something was appropriated for one thing is now being used for something else. That is concerning because there are procedures that we have and we follow and there is protocol to how things are accomplished. So for me, that is concerning. I've been able to find some answers to questions, but they have certainly raised more questions to how things have transpired with this grant. And now we want to add an additional 50-some more students. It does sound like there have been great success since 54. We're told that they've added two classrooms for 30 and maybe Dr. Sovine could clear that up. But most concerning to me is that I feel like we were initially misled and now there's questions to our Board as to why we didn't, why we would originally fund something and now we wouldn't consider it. So understand that this is what we originally approved and now we're asking for an additional request of monies that have been used for something else.
I'm going to go here, but this is way outside of our normal parameters. Dr. Sovine.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, first of all-- Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, first of all, thank you for bringing this issue up again tonight. Appreciate the, just the opportunity to discuss this. Also, thank you for the questions and the opportunity to hopefully provide further clarity. Our School Board has conducted and asked numerous questions, going back to May and June meetings, very detailed questions to myself and staff regarding this program. The initial request, the over $200,000, that was for initial startup. With many grants, you have a startup amount and then you have a second installment. The second installment, the $500,000 request that you just recently acted on, provided the complete funds for the entire school year. And that is for 17-18. Also, our counterparts and partners in the state have received notification from federal U.S. Department of Education that funds remain available for our existing program, preschool program, for the following year. Our School Board, in June, June 20th, they actually had a joint meeting, instruction and personnel committee. At that point, we were getting additional information from our state in terms of funds that would allow us to offer three classes at the three sites that currently exist. In that discussion, and I certainly appreciate Mr. Lofton and his attendance at that committee meeting, because there were a number of questions that were posed and since we have shared with the Board of Supervisors for clarity in writing. But part of that discussion in that joint committee that eventually, that later that night went to the full Board, was with our discussions with the state. At that point, they had funds for two classrooms, but they were sharing with us in three days, on the 23rd, we would likely receive information that would allow us to offer this to three classes, total of what we see right now, 54 students. In a public, very transparent setting, we ask our School Board for latitude. In the event that three days later, on the 23rd, if it was confirmed that we do not have funding for those additional classrooms, that we would simply keep it at the two classes. We did receive confirmation three days later and that's why you have the second installment, which includes the three classes. But the initial $200,000 was for a startup, which is very typical. With a preschool program, normally, this is approved much earlier. This opportunity was presented to us late in the school year. Thanks to our School Board and staff, we were able to put a lot of time into making this a reality for our children. So I certainly appreciate the questions and opportunities for further clarification. But from a School Board standpoint, we've been very transparent and worked to answer questions that were posed in that June 20th meeting. And since then, as we tend to do, we provide that information as a courtesy to this Board so that you have good information before making a decision. But in this case-- But in this case, it is, it's a grant that requires no local dollars. While you look at our operating fund, our operating fund has very little federal dollars, about 3% of our operating fund. However, we do rely on federal funds, and we do rely on federal grants. One example, not related to preschool, is our Perkins Grant, a grant that supports career and technical education. So these are important grants that allow us to provide the most appropriate services and educational opportunities to our youngest, as well as our high school students. But for further clarity, the initial request was for the initial startup, and then the $500,000 request was remaining funds, and that is a second installment, which covers the full cost of our existing program, which was voted on by our board on June 20th. Mr. Chairman, I hope that provides clarity. Certainly remain available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. And if you would stay there for a moment, does anyone else have a question for Dr. Sovine and his associates? Anyone?
I will.
Senator Dunn?
First of all, Dr. Sovine, Dr. Lamanna, and the school board, we've had, I've made requests for you for information, and you have responded to me in a timely manner. So I want to make it very publicly, public, that I do appreciate the timeliness of that. We may or may not disagree on this issue, we may or may not disagree on some other issues, we have agreed and disagreed. But I do want to let you know that I do appreciate the timely response to questions, some of which have been, you know, looking for facts.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
You have made comments from your perception on what you believe you have conveyed to us, the board. The first vote that I had in May was reading, as you know, our information goes through the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee met, and then it came to us as a full board. And the item on the full board simply said that there was a request for the monies of the $280,000, I rounded off, and there's a memo to Cheryl Schiffler from Patty Camery.
Carrie.
Here's the memo here, which you probably already have, and it simply said, I'm going to quote, "The FY 2017 budget adjustment to the School Operating Fund is requested for $280,825.34, which represents federal grant funds awarded in FY 2017 and are to be used to fund two preschool classrooms for the 2017-2018 school year. No local funds are required." That was the sum total of what I was basing a vote on. I had nothing else at that point in time. I did not know that there was going to be future money coming. My assumption, rightly or wrongly, was that this was a total dollar amount for the complete school year. At the end of the school year, and sometime in the spring, we would go through another budget process to try to discuss that. So that vote was based on $280,000 federal funds, no grant involved, and I voted yes. The second point of information that came to me when making decisions was when I attended a Finance Committee meeting. I was not a member, and I am not a member. I was there on other business because of something else that was happening before that Finance Committee meeting. And at that time, there was a discussion on that, and at that meeting, there was a memorandum which also came into our board packet, dated September 7th, to Cheryl Schiffler, from Patty Camery, talking about budget requests, and there were four items, four budget adjustments to the operating fund. And that was here, I'm sure, if you want to catch up with me on that, that's fine. Number three on that said, "A budget adjustment to the School Operating Fund is requested for $502,498.66, which represents the final award amount for FY 2018 for VPI Plus Preschool Education Grant under the United States Department of Education. No local funds are required." That was the second piece of information I had, and that's all I had. Mr. Lofton made a comment at that meeting in which he said his concern was that once programs began with federal funding, they are very difficult to stop, and so he voted no in the Finance Committee. Those words resonated with me, so I'm just letting you know where I'm coming from. After the vote, I read in the newspaper, and I do not know if it's accurate or inaccurate, that this grant also covers teaching English to adults. There was nothing in the, and the fact that, according to, I believe what you said, that the money for this program would run out in November. I don't know when, but that was what was quoted. So that was the body of knowledge that I had when making the vote, and the information I have right now after the vote. Can you tell me whether this money represents the rest of this year's budget for two schools, or is it for three schools? Does it include startup funds for the next year's budget? If you can elaborate on that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I may.
Yes, sir, please.
To Mr. Dunn's question, the second installment, the $500,000, represents funding for the remainder of the school year for the existing three preschool classrooms. So that represents funding for, total funding for the preschool program for all three classrooms for this school year. Also, we received notification through federal government, U.S. Department of Ed, through our Virginia representatives, that fundings, funds remain available for, to sustain this program through next year. Speaking in terms of protocol, and I appreciate you referencing the Finance Committee meetings, and protocol from a county standpoint is that the request for an appropriation adjustment does come through our finance director, based on the action of our school board. I generally attend, and I was in attendance for the last finance meeting where this was an action, where Mrs. Camery came forward. As always, remain available regarding any questions that may come up from a Finance Committee standpoint or board standpoint. But it is standard practice for a budget-related item that our school representative would be our executive director of finance. From a school system standpoint, as I mentioned, normally, just as with the governing body, there are committee meetings that are open to the public. In this case, on June 20th, this was a joint committee meeting by the school board with instruction and personnel. And then later, in a full school board meeting, it was acted upon regarding our board to move forward with the remaining second installment, $500,000, which represents, which completely funds our existing program, which supports 54 students total.
Mr. Chairman.
Also, I'll add, and I think you posed a question in terms of what the funds go for, and certainly there are personnel there. I know this is something our joint committee and board discussed. It also provides nutrition, breakfast, lunch, as well as snacks to our preschoolers. There's also parent outreach and support there. Additionally, interpreter services. So this, the program is very comprehensive in nature. So we're fortunate to have funds that do not require local dollars.
Briefly, please.
For clarity's sake, we are not using grant dollars to teach English to adults.
Thank you. Dr. Sovine, just one quick, approximately, it's approximate, to the operating expense then for next year for these schools only is approximately $500,000. I know you've paid for part of August, September, so a little bit more than 500, is that a best guess?
No, sir. The initial installment, the first installment, which was a little over $200,000, the second installment, $500,000, really, it's in, the total program for a full year is a little over $783,000. That is for the full year. We have represented funding for that, and as I mentioned, there's also funding available to sustain this program for the next school year.
Can I just provide, if I can just provide a point of clarification?
Sorry?
It will be slightly less than that total 780, because we won't have to pay for playgrounds, we won't have to buy furniture, we won't have to buy curriculum materials, and we won't have to send staff to training, initial training that they've attended this year. So the second year, I'm sorry, Dr. Sovine, the second year grant award will be less than that 780, the full year operating. I don't know what it'll be, but it's going to be less than that 500 plus 280.
So, I mean, Dr. Angelo, I'm not going to, I don't expect you to know this number off the top of your head, but you think that the number then is closer to the 700,000 figure versus a 500,000 figure, or is that unfair? I'm just asking.
You know, it's hard to answer at this point, as Dr. Angelo has mentioned, and he's exactly right. The initial installment was pretty broad in scope. When you start a preschool program from scratch, you have to invest funds for playground equipment and so forth that is required by the grant. So that will not be, that will not need to be purchased in the second year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Go ahead.
Dr. Sovine.
Yes, sir.
Am I to believe that we wanted to start a pilot program for one school year, and that we accepted less money than we knew it was going to take for that school year? That's what was represented in the memo from Mrs. Camery, asking for the budget adjustment. So am I to believe that you intentionally knew that that funding will not carry us through the first school year?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In our work with the state, it was clear that we would have an initial installment, and that would not cover everything for the entire year, but it would be enough to get us started, provide us with an opportunity to hire teachers, to make investment regarding some of the grant requirements pertaining to equipment, things of that nature. Also, it was communicated to us that there would be additional funds, which we see now, the $500,000. So what was communicated to us is that there was a commitment, and what we took forward to our board was a commitment definitely for one year, actually, two years out. Now, beyond two years, it's not certain. However, looking, and I cannot predict two years out, but it is possible that the funds may be reduced, and it may go away. But looking at other federal programs, such as Perkins Grants and so forth, while we've had some reductions, those funds have remained. And I would hope with a national focus and research from not only an educational standpoint, but a medical standpoint in terms of benefits of preschool programs to our youngest children, when we live in an age where many of our children, unfortunately, are experiencing some very challenging home circumstances and are coming to us at very early ages with some significant challenges. I believe this represents an opportunity for us to serve our children now, and if the funding from the feds, and it's a big if, if it goes away, and it could, then our school board will evaluate that at that time. We recognize, as Dr. Lamanna has referenced, that our current funding body does not have a desire to use local dollars for that, but this is an opportunity to use no local dollars and offer one of the best preschool programs we have to offer to our most vulnerable children. And we certainly seize that opportunity, and we did so in a very transparent manner, being very open with our board. As I referenced, there were some very detailed questions that I've shared with you that occurred in that joint meeting and discussion by our school board. And as I mentioned, I appreciate your interest in being at that meeting. So we appreciate that level of engagement.
Mr. Chairman.
Senator Ewing.
Dr. Sovine.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Lamanna made the statement that it's not the intention to ask for local funds to continue this program. Intention means several things to me. I'm going to interpret it to say, he is not, the school board is not going to ask local body for additional funding of this program at the end of the grant. At that time, what happens to the program? What happens to the children that's in the program? And what have we created at that point?
Yeah. I believe, I'd certainly like, you mentioned Dr. Lamanna, and as our chairman, certainly want to provide him the opportunity, as he's working with our school board, and I've had individual conversations, but I certainly, in this case, do not want to speak for Dr. Lamanna. I'll be glad to address potential options, but I wanted to give, I want to give him an opportunity to speak first, and I'll be glad to expand in terms of potential options if you're asking kind of the what ifs.
Yes, thank you.
Do you want to repeat the question? No, you don't have to. It would be a difficult decision. Our commitment, though, in talking to the school board, consensus was, unanimous consensus was, that it was not our intent to go to the Board of Supervisors to support this program as an additional fund. When that happens in two years, let's say that the federal funds do run out, it will be, if we put that into our budget, if we decide that it's a valuable program, but put it into our budget, other things will have to be cut. It just simply comes down to that. And I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, but that would be the option. It's not an issue of that we would submit, hire a budget to include that, no. We would have to make certain cuts to make that happen.
So you're telling me, then, that there is the possibility of local funds being used for the continuation of the program?
You mean if it's within our budget?
Local dollar.
I think if we decide after those two years that it's a quality program, that it's something we do want and do not want to discontinue, and we put it in part of our budget, then again, yes, and we'd have to cut other items.
A commitment to me that no local dollar is going to go into the program affects my vote tremendously.
So it would come down to the judgment of whether we think this is worthwhile or not? Yes?
No commitment, then. Okay.
Mr. Ewing, just for full transparency's sake, as we've talked with our school board, and certainly it is a school board decision, and I have the privilege of representing and speaking on their behalf, and certainly, we've benefited from a very strong relationship over the years, and that remains our commitment. We cannot predict the future, as I mentioned. It's a big what if, if these funds are totally stopped. Is it possible? Yes. Is it likely? I'm not sure. It could be reduced. This was an opportunity, we are one of very few school divisions and communities that do not offer a preschool program in public schools. Matter of fact, the majority of communities, many for quite some time across the Commonwealth, have funded with local dollars preschool programs. We recognize that that is not the will, and as Dr. Lamanna has referenced. For that reason, we have been eligible for over $700,000 a year from VPI funds from the state, but our school board has not brought that forward because that would require a local match. This was an opportunity to do so, to provide quality preschool programs to our most vulnerable children and families at no cost. Now, our desire is to build capacity for why this is of value and an investment for our community. our community. And the end of two, two years, if the funds dry, our school board, who's responsible for managing our schools, will have a decision. If they do not see value in this program, then it's likely that it will cease. But I think, looking at what we have heard tonight and what our school board is hearing in two months, we're seeing, we've seen significant benefits, and I think that will, given the opportunity, that will only continue. If that dries up, there's a second option of VPI dollars and a local match, recognizing this funding body. I believe, as Dr. Lamanna has referenced, that has not been an option of the school board to bring that forward to this body. So then the third option would be, in two years, if this grant totally ceased, and our school board saw value in this for our children, then they would make a decision, just as they do each and every year through the operating fund budget. Every year, we do not bring forward all of our needs. Our board, our school board goes through the exercise of identifying the most critical needs. We recognize you have tremendous pressures, tremendous pressures beyond the school system. Also, we recognize that from a state standpoint, through the recession, our state has not fully covered their, their full burden, and that has put pressure on the funding body. We recognize that. But my point is, if our school board in two years, and that's a big if, this, the federal dollars dry up, their option then would be to decide, is there great value in this for our children? Is this a good investment? And if so, perhaps our school board at that time, which may look different than it is today, so I cannot predict what may be in two years, but our school board will decide whether or not there's value to make some decisions, to make some cuts with the current funding available and operating to make this a reality. And that will be a decision made by, by our school board. So hopefully that provides some clarity regarding that, and once again, I, I cannot claim to be in a position to predict the future, but I've tried to best lay out what I think may be if there were different scenarios and this federal funding is not available.
Dr. Sine, I appreciate that. My big concern, the possible magnitude of this program in the future, and the taxpayer may be having to take on the burden of funding it. I know within your school budget, no problem, it's still coming from tax, taxpayer, state, local, or federal. I think the taxpayer for something of this level needs an opportunity for more input as to what they see as the need and as how they see the liability to them is. And education, no question, important. Don't doubt that for one question. But at some level, the taxpayer has got to be involved in it and satisfied with it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may address.
Hold up, hold up. We're not going to do this. You had your chance. Not going to debate this. I've allowed a lot of extra intercourse and discussion here, which is positive. We all have the same goals. Everyone in this room has the same goals. So, Dr. Savin, last time, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, and once again, thank you for this opportunity. And Mr. Ewing, we've always had a very cordial relationship, and I appreciate you sharing your perspective. We may disagree, but I'll, I'll share with you that from my perspective, I would ask, from a, a taxpayer standpoint, that you consider the benefits of this investment and the return on this investment. We recognize if we do not get it right early on in K through two, the cost for our taxpayers is great, especially if our students are not graduating on time, and if they're not productive citizens. The most costly thing for our taxpayers is when we have adult citizens that make poor choices and that end up in jail. So this program represents an opportunity early on to do it right and to get our students reading on grade level by second or third grade, and I think the research is pretty significant there. We get them reading, the more students that we get reading on grade level by second grade, that reduces costs later on and increases the likelihood of students graduating on time and also becoming engaged, productive citizens, and I think that's what we're all about. So I appreciate perspective, and I believe it's important for us to be able to, to disagree and do so respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Lamanna, you had one comment I believe you wanted to make.
I won't hold up much longer. Just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I think that we're going to have two years of federal money to support this program to see if it does work. Citizens will certainly see it at that point in time throughout that process. Second of all, we do have an active citizen involvement in our budget process, both at the school level and at the Board of Supervisors, and I certainly would expect input at that point on the value of that program. And third of all, referencing again what I mentioned earlier, I just suggest that individually, think about what's driving your decision. Is driving your decision the concern for finances two years from now? It's legitimate. Think through that. Or are you really making a qualitatively decision, qualitative decision on the services being offered by the school? And I repeat again, that that is, by code, by ethics, by responsibility, the job of the school board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. We appreciate all you do and appreciate your extra participation. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may, first of all, I think the status, both statewide and nationally, Frederick County Schools speaks for itself. We're certainly in the higher levels, and that is because we have a good school board. We have good superintendents, and we have good teachers who care about what happens and spend untold hours making sure that our children meet the goals of both state and federal requirements and of their parents' requirements. So thank you to the school board and to the teachers that are here. As I look out in the room, I see taxpayers. Is there anyone out there that's not paying taxes? Just checking. So when we talk about taxpayers and I see other people in the room, whether it's a school issue or a road issue or whatever we're talking about, we're all taxpayers. This board pays taxes and you pay taxes, whether you're teachers or whether you're just individuals working in the community. You pay state, federal, local taxes, as do I. Again, I think the school board makes the decisions as to how those monies that we allow them to, to take with them, that we give them, if you will, after many, many hours of budget discussions. They get to spend that as they feel is best for Frederick County, and from what I see in the past, they've done a pretty doggone good job. So again, congratulations on, on taking what you have and doing the best with it that you can. That being said, it's, I think it's important for us to get past talking about taxpayers and money. When we have an opportunity to fund a program that doesn't cost us anything at a local level, we take that opportunity. Saw some children here in the room, and I saw the pictures you hold up. That's who we should be thinking about at this point. That's who I think about. The what ifs and what happens in two years, I can change and say, you know what, wish I had the money, don't have the money. But that would be like me saying to my son, you know what, you've got a grant to go to two years of college. It ends in two years, and Dad doesn't have the money for the next two years. So you know what, you can't have the grant because I don't know what's going to happen, and what's that going to do to you emotionally at the end of those two years? You're, you're going to say, oh, my world is over. Well, you know what, at least you got two years in. So maybe the two years motivates you to, to find a way to get the next two years, or motivates the parents to find a way. I'm in favor of this program. I think it's a good program. We have an opportunity in Frederick County, and I think we should take advantage of it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
I'll make one other, I'll make one other comment, and then I'll just want to read through some thoughts. There was a woman in here who said, you know what, oops, I made a mistake. So every once in a while, you say something that you might have regretted saying. So since I had the word appropriate used a number of times, I'll withdraw that word, and I could have used a better word for better consideration, so just keep that thought in mind. None of us in here are perfect, and the way I may or may not agree with you, but you know, I will acknowledge, you know, certain things. As I said earlier, I want to thank Dr. Lamanna, Dr. Savin, and the board for responding to my questions in a timely manner. From my perspective, let me just walk through a background, some concerns, and some alternatives. The background, as I said to Dr. Savin, the initial grant was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for two pre-K classrooms, not three. The additional request for another five hundred and two thousand dollars was a surprise. I think we've discussed that in the last couple of minutes, but that total cost now runs seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. As Dr. Angelo said, the operating cost will be close to that. It will be less, but it will be in that, in that parameter. The cost per student, for those fifty-four students, is fourteen thousand five hundred and six dollars with the current budget. That's significant. Even if the cost went down to five hundred thousand dollars per year, the cost is going to run about ninety-two hundred dollars per student for an operating budget. There are a number of sources on social media that have indicated that the intent is to have this program in all elementary schools within three years. Elementary schools are currently close to overcapacity based upon the school size revisions by the school board. Elementary school capacities declined from sixty-six, fifty-six to fifty-nine seventy-three, approximately a ten percent decline. The Board of Supervisors authorized a new elementary school, but some planners say that we, that it will reach capacity within a five to seven-year timeframe. At that time, the demand will, at that time, demand will grow for an additional new elementary school, which will also require more debt and higher taxes. A pre-K in every school would create an additional two hundred-plus seats for, which would compete with limited, limited elementary school seats. And there was a woman here that made the comment about a twelve percent return on investment, so for that, just recognize there are other studies that would have a different outcome. The operating cost for the streets, for the three schools at seven hundred thousand dollars is high. If you go to, to six classes or nine, you're going to double or triple that figure. The county has competing financial needs. Last year, I strongly advocated for thirteen school buses for the school system a number of years ago. They'd not been able to do that because of the financial crunch that we went through four or five years ago. Those school buses, those school buses cost a hundred thousand dollars per bus, and I hope we will address that later tonight. The sheriff office has a need for new equipment and new vehicles, but we have not been able to fund his needs, his total request for public safety. My concern is that federal funding is removed in two years, we will have a significant financial obligation. Current county dates, current county debt's about a hundred and seventy-one million. I believe that alternatives exist. Head Start operates in this county, and there is Head Start, United Way, and local churches who all currently provide assistance to the various students that we're talking about. If instead of grant money, if instead of grant money, a stipend were given to each child for use at a daycare, where the student still would have interaction with children at a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week, the total cost would run approximately forty-five hundred dollars, significantly less than the fourteen thousand dollars that this program will cost on a per-child basis. I might be able to support a private sector alternative at a much lower cost, but I don't believe I'm going to be able to support this program. Head Start was designed to go and help at-risk children, and there are private sector options that are available. Just be aware of that. One last comment, the gentleman over here who made the comment about a referendum, I'd support that. I'd support that if there were a full discussion on costs, on services, on the benefits across the board, that'd be fine. So just recognize that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, had a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, a lot of comments, but in my mind, there are still too many unanswered questions. I fully believe that if this budget adjustment is approved, all taxpayers of Frederick County will be burdened with much higher costs and taxes, for it is my firm belief that this school board does not have the desire, the will, or the courage to end this program when the grant ends.
Further discussion, anyone? You ready to vote? Supervisor Ewing?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
If it's aye, the motion carries. We thank everyone for their participation and their patience. I'll have to remind everyone again, everyone in this room has the same goals for our community and our children, and we thank you for what you do to contribute to that. Finance Committee report. Supervisor Slaughter.
Give me just a minute. My, my screen is gone asleep.
Mine tried to die a couple of times.
Okay. All right. Finance Committee meeting was held on the first floor of the North Ken Street Building on Wednesday, October eighteenth. Items number six and eight were approved under consent agenda, and I would so move.
For the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Okay, item number one, the Frederick County Public School Finance Director requests a school operating fund and general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. This amount represents unspent fiscal year 2017 funds to be spent on buses. Local funds are required. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
For the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Okay, the Commissioner of Revenue requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. The amount represents fiscal year eighteen funds, salary and fringes needed for a full-time data collector, currently part-time. The request has been forwarded to the H R Committee. Local funds are required. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
For the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there any discussion? Sorry?
Just hold on.
Discussion?
Are we on number two?
Yeah. Discussion, anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Let me back up to item number two. Yes, I did. Okay. So item number two is the Parks and Recreation Director requests approval to apply for a VDOT transportation alternatives, T A grant for fiscal year nineteen and twenty, funding for the development of Phase One of the Abern TA Grant for fiscal year 19 and 20, funding for the development of Phase One of the Abrams Creek and the adoption of the transportation set aside resolution of support. The Parks and Recreation Committee has approved. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion. Now, we're on item two. Is there a second?
Second.
In the second, any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes no, the motion carries.
Okay, then, we've already addressed item number three, so I'll move on to item number four.
Ma'am, I thought the previous story had been...I would like to change my vote on item number three from the aye to the nay, because I thought we were voting...
I beg your pardon.
Now, you would like to do what, Supervisor Dunn?
On number three?
Yes.
My vote was no.
Yes.
My vote was no.
That's the way I recorded it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so...
Supervisor Slaughter?
Onto item number four.
Thank you, ma'am.
The sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $266,508. This amount represents fiscal year 18 funds needed to hire $113,652 in salaries and fringes and equipment, $152,856, three full-time Deputy One positions. The request had been forwarded to the Public Safety Committee, and then on to Finance Committee. Local funds are required. I would remind the committee that at the end of fiscal year 17, that the Sheriff Department had a balance of about $500,000 of funds, and of that, $300,000 was in carry forward from the previous year. So, we still had an additional $200,000 that was left unspent in their budget. So, committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Item number five, the sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $11,173.40. This amount represents sheriff's sale proceeds in excess of revenue budgeted. No local funds required. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
In the second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
That will take us to item number seven, the Public Works Director requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1 million. The amount represents funds needed to complete the Stevenson Convenience Site. Local funds are required. The committee recommended approval. And after our committee meeting, I think the appropriation that needs to be made, but I will share the information that I have, would be for a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $330,537. The bid amount came in at $1.212,94. Contingencies and relocation, so we had an adjusted cost. We currently have an appropriation, which is in the Public Works budget that was transferred out of the capital contingency fund of $485,970. And the county administrator has additional funds of $604,787 in the capital contingency fund that could be used to offset that expenditure, which would leave us a balance of $330,537. I have spoken with our county administrator, and he was comfortable with doing that. We still have $300 and some thousand in the operating contingency, which could be shifted from capital to operating if need be. So, I would offer the motion that we make a supplemental appropriation, the amount of $330,537, to cover the cost, the additional cost of the convenience center.
Thank you. Have you heard the motion? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Do we concur that that's the proper appropriation? Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. That'll bring us to Planning Commission Business, Resolutions, Revenue Sharing Application Support. Is that you, Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you may recall, on October 11th, you authorized staff to request a transfer of revenue sharing funds from the Valley Mill Road project over to the projects that we collectively know as Russell 150 or Heritage Commons rezoning projects. However, following that action, we're advised by VDOT that we were better to apply again through revenue sharing directly, as opposed to doing that transfer. So, that is what we're bringing forward to you this evening. What we're seeking this evening is two applications. The first would apply to the Tevis Bridge over I-81 up until the Roundabout, and I've got a map coming up after this. The amount of funds we're seeking for that is $2,226,126. And the second is the airport road itself from the Roundabout east to Route 522, and of course, the improvements involved with creating that intersection. The additional revenue sharing funds we're seeking for that is $1,415,882, with the total before the two being $3.642 million. On the screen to your left, you can see a map that outlines the totality of the different road projects we have over there. However, I have homed in on what we're applying for here with the highlighting. The red, of course, is Airport Road Extension and the intersection 522, and the blue is the Roundabout and the bridge over Interstate 81. Now, an important question for the board is always, how is the agreement formed? What happens if things don't go as well as we wish on a project? These projects collectively are covered through our agreement with MMA Corporation. Under that agreement, if there are any cost overruns, that private partner is 100% responsible for the overrun. That agreement is already in place and executed. Finally, staff is seeking action this evening specifically to authorize us to apply for these funds as detailed previously. But just to reiterate, that's the $2,226,126 for the Tevis Bridge over I-81 and Roundabout, and $1,415,882 for the airport road and its intersection with 522. I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Mr. Bishop? Anyone? Supervisor Fisher?
These numbers include the money we were going to transfer. It's just expanded in both these resolutions.
Technically, it's different money. This is the way...
I understand, but we're looking at...really, it's kind of the same dollars, but just presented in a different way.
It's within a hundred thousand of what you would have been transferring.
That's well thought. Okay.
Other questions of Mr. Bishop? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton?
I would move to approve the resolution for the Board of Supervisors to endorse the bridge over I-81 and Roundabout revenue sharing project as outlined by Mr. Bishop.
There were two separate resolutions.
Two separate resolutions?
Yes.
You can adopt both of those.
I shall make that first motion for the bridge over I-81.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Everyone understand the motion? Are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Bring us to the second resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve a resolution to endorse the Airport Road Extension intersection of Route 522 revenue sharing project.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. I do believe that brings us to Board Liaison Reports. Are there any? Citizen comments on any issue that they would like to speak with the board about. Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Shannon Trout, Shawnee District. I just wanted to thank the board for reconsidering the preschool vote. We really appreciate it. And thank you for listening to all the public comments. We appreciate that as well. Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right. Yes, sir.
You'll have to excuse me. It takes me longer to get up front anymore. Alan Morrison from Gainesboro District. I know you're tired. I'm certainly tired. Just a couple of comments on tonight. There was a lot of misinformation bandied about over this grant money for the schools. One can make the statements that the school administration and the school board has been disingenuous, deceptive, opaque, misleading. But those would be unkind things to say, and, you know, we shouldn't be saying unkind things. And we saw the examples of this when we read the letters to the editor last week, how friendly, civil, all those letters were that were in opposition to what you all did. When I was in the private sector, we had one rule that we never leave landmines for somebody else to walk onto. And I think that's something that we need to work on, the communications between the school boards and the supportive supervisors. I don't know if you remember, it might date you, there was a book out in the late '60s, early '70s called Men Are From Mars and Women Are From Venus. And I'm thinking that book highlights the problem we've been having, is that we all say the same things, but we have entirely different meanings. And I put it into the position of worldview. You have a worldview of how things ought to work, and apparently school administration and school board has an entirely separate worldview of how things appear and how things ought to work. Both feel that they are doing the appropriate thing for the right reasons, but they are missing each other wildly, by many miles in the discussion, the information, and the communications. So, from now on, let's hope that both sides will be much more open, much more truthful, and much more honest in everything that we are told, and the implication of what we are being told to one another. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone? Yes, ma'am. Name in Magistero District, please.
Nancy Dizarn, Gainesboro. I just wanted to thank Ms. McCann Slaughter, who I'm not in her district, for talking to me earlier this week. And I would like to thank Mr. Gene Fisher. And I would like to say that I'm very disappointed that my own representative didn't return any of my emails or phone calls. What I'd like to say as an end to this, and Mr. Wells, I would like to thank you too, because you also spoke to me. And for all the people who I don't live in your district, you certainly entertained a lot of questions and comments and different things for me. And I would just like to say that I think the bottom line here is as elected officials, you do work for us. You work for the people that came here tonight. And I do appreciate the people that I can't even elect or reelect talking to me. And I hope that for the future, that in Gainesboro District, we have someone who will listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? All right. Close the public comment portion. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure with my following comment, I'm going to get a lot of applause from the audience. Since this election is coming up before the next board meeting, this will be my last meeting serving the board, serving the Gainesboro District. So, I'm sure a lot of people will be happy. But I just want to thank the board for providing confidence in me to serve in this interim period. I appreciate working with you, and I appreciate all the support that you've given me. Wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, just on behalf of the board, and I'm sure others would like to, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you all these years, multiple times.
Multiple times.
Appreciate all your hard work. Other comments, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Dunn?
I have two comments. I've been swamped with emails and phone calls. One of those emails came from a person who's in this room. I returned her phone call, and then I wrote her a letter. She did not agree with that letter. And she wrote back and said, do not return, there's no need to talk. So, I laid out a long policy petition for her. It was a four-page letter. And when she said that there was no need to talk, I did not return her phone call. Some of you will be getting phone calls or emails from me, but it's been swamped. So, I'll lay out the positions that I have had on this recent vote. I did respond to a couple. I've not responded to everybody. I do appreciate the people that called, even though we disagree. And I was listening, and I read everything that I was sent. I read everything that, and I listened to the phone calls that were left for me. But it is not true that I did not return Mrs. Dizarn's phone call. Or, I did not...let me rephrase. I did not return her phone call, but I did respond to her, and she asked me not to call her, so I just represented that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I want to change the subject for a second. I also would like to thank Mr. Ewing for his service on the board. I've enjoyed working with him for a year. We've had some good conversations. We've agreed with some policies, disagreed with some others. I think he's a gentleman. I think he listens. And so, I'm glad that I had the opportunity to work with him for a year. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would like to echo those comments as well. It has certainly been an honor and a plebred privilege to serve with you, Mr. Ewing. I first started on Finance Committee when Mr. Ewing chaired the Finance Committee, and I don't think there's anyone that would look harder for taxpayers for their dollars in making sure that we try to do the best we can with what we have. So, thank you so much. You've been a great mentor to me as well.
Others, anyone? Supervisor Lofton?
Might as well paddle on while we can. I've known Supervisor Ewing for many years. We used to work together in a different life. And then, as now, I have found him to be an honest, upstanding person with great expectations for this county, and has done his best to serve this county to make it a better quality of life than when he started. And I think that he has succeeded in doing that with finesse and honor. So, thank you, Mr. Ewing, for your service.
Thank you. Hope I can live up to future to these comments.
Anyone else? Vice Chairman Fisher?
Move for adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
No adjourners, there's a second.
Sorry.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank everyone for their time and attention. We'll stay in adjourn.